Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This evening, we have Eric Douglas, pastor of Beacon Community Church, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invitation. Eric, come forward.
Please stand. Join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Could you join me in prayer? Father God, thank you for all of these individuals who are here to serve our community, for our mayor, our city council, the staff, police. I pray that you would protect them, protect their spouses, their kids, their grandkids, their families. I pray that tonight there would be just unity in the discussion, the decisions that have to be made for the flourishing of our city here, Lord. We thank you that you hear our prayers and we just ask for your blessing on them and for this meeting tonight. In Jesus's name, we thank you that he can come to you. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I would seek a motion to approve this evening's agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda. E makes the motion approved. Second, Aubrey seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to citizen comments. It's a chance for any of you that are here, small but mighty crowd, if you'd like to come up and speak. You have three minutes. We will listen and then if there's a need or if you'd like to visit with us further after the meeting or you're the city administrator, we'd be happy to sit down and have a meeting with you. But this is a point in time in the meeting where we listen, so it's really not a situation where we have dialogue. So with that, I'll invite any of you to come forward and please sign in. It's kind of like what's my line, sign your name and address. Yeah, come on forward, please.
Hi, thanks for allowing this time for you guys to listen to our thoughts and our opinions. I've heard from multiple people that this council values our opinions and so I hope that your request will be openly considered. My name is Devin Evans and my family and I have lived in Goddard for almost two and a half years. This is my husband, Caleb Evans. Only just a week ago, it came to our attention that the city sprays a mosquito fog twice a week during the warmer months of the year. We were surprised given the fact that we read through the Goddard plans every month. We tried to stay somewhat involved in the community and it was never mentioned there. We were under the impression that if there was something to know about the city of Goddard, that it would be in there. We were also surprised to see strangers digging in our backyard. Come to find out later, they were installing the fiber optics. But no one notified us and I know that based on my age, it's probably assumed that I spend a considerable amount of time on social media and would have seen those communications, but I don't. And I'm sure I'm not the only one in the neighborhood who doesn't either have an account or check that. And so if there's something to announce that affects the entire city, this brings me to my first request. Could you put it in the Goddard plans or a separate mailer or some other kind of direct communication? I like what note, I like to know what's going on in the city. So yeah, adding it to a mailer or something or putting it, even putting the agenda items for the city council meetings or the city council meetings in the Goddard plans or if you want to come to a city meeting, check this website for the time, here's the agenda. I don't know how often that changes, but a place where we can regularly go that's more active to see those things, but having that in the Goddard plans to go to look for something. My second and more worthy request is if the city stops spraying the mosquito fog altogether. I know that you're done for the season, but can we make sure that it isn't sprayed again next year? September 18th, almost eight weeks ago, my four-year-old daughter was diagnosed with a QV cell mitoblastic leukemia. Not to be confused with the other mom who was here last week. There's two of us. There are two children in our community who were diagnosed within six days of each other. The same kind of leukemia. And I've been doing some digging on public and medical databases and there's enough concern about this chemical being sprayed that there are dozens, more likely hundreds of papers talking about melothion and cancer in children and adults. Given that represent, given that the entire population of Goddard is children or adults, I think this should give us all a reason to pause. So my request to stop using melothion is one out of an abundance of caution. So please don't use this same product again next year and maybe don't use any pesticides at all. There's too much research showing the toxic exposure is good for us, especially growing and developing children if we have plenty of in our area. Thank you.
God bless you. Thanks. I know that's hard and our hearts are grieving you too for that. So I think I really care about you and your children. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and close citizen comments for this evening. And we'll move on to item E. This time, I'd like to give the council a chance to clarify any conflict or communication that they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's agenda impartially in conflict. No, 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 no. Okay. Good there. Any recognition this evening? City administrator, Craig for second.
I'm a mayor of the city council. It is my pleasure, if you could roll the slides for me, Terry, Sarah, whoever is the clicker, to recognize my colleague, our community development director, Micah Skoggin, for his achievement in acquiring the American Institute for Certified Planners, AICP certification. Micah's been with the city for, what, about six years now? Started out here as a city planner, quickly promoted to community development director and he has played a large role in our community strategic growth and we're really excited to continue to invest in him in this way and for the returns that he will continue to bring to our organization. Micah, why don't you come up and say a few words?
Oh, boy.
Here's a slide prepared for you. Sorry, timer, Terry.
Sure. First of all, where does Peter come from?
That one was AI documented. We didn't have to modify it quite a bit. Drop about twenty years off of that. That's where I was getting my bachelor's. So I belong to the magazine. I'll start by quoting subdivision regulations. I just want to thank everybody for encouraging me to get through the process of just getting my, first my master's in, then AICP and I appreciate Craig letting me study, take the test, pass the test, which was, you know, just kind of a ridiculous process, but I do appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity to counsel anybody else as we move forward with growth and development to consider each project with its individual merits. And as we move into the future, I anticipate at some point, we will move from a city of the second class to a city of the first class, which is something exciting to think about, so I appreciate it. So thank you, guys.
Amen. We're proud.
Stand. Michael, we do appreciate all your efforts along with the rest of the staff. I mean, there's a lot of things that have happened in this last ten months, a lot of great things and we're moving in positive direction and a lot of your efforts are the result of making that happen. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. Item G. We've made some changes to consent agenda, some of the more blocked and tackled things that we've been doing, like voting seven times to approve a street or a road or sewer project. Some of those things have never been included in the consent agenda. If everybody's had a chance to look this over, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Grant makes a motion.
Second.
Krista's second. She moved her hand, so her voice is kind of weak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business under H. So move to new business, aye. Running track city, you know, assistance of the administrator. Batter up.
I've got half of the new business items, so. Good evening, mayor and council. This first item that we're going to review this evening, again, this is just for council review. No approval is required or any formal motions. But we are in the process of bringing on a new staff person here at city hall and I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of it and address any questions or concerns you may have regarding this position, which at this time, we're calling a community engagement director. So partially, this is in result of the Goddard Chamber of Commerce recently deciding not to renew its agreement with the city in terms of hosting our larger events. So think of Fall Festival, the Main Street Market events, National Night Out, these larger events that do draw a lot of people to our community. The chamber has decided not to renew that agreement. So we want to make sure that we can continue to host these events. They're a great, a great quality of, quality of place initiative that we have these events. It also brings in people from outside of our community, which brings in additional tax revenue, which is a good thing. And so we are proposing with this new, this new position that they would direct these annual events. They would be in charge of executing them along with fulfilling other duties you can see here. So enhancing the efficiency or city operations and communications with the general public and also focusing on improving the community, namely the downtown corridor. So the job description is listed in the agenda packet, so you have that to review. But again, those key responsibilities are executing those annual community events, engaging in community outreach and engagement activities, managing the city's social media pages as well as the city's website and newsletter, and then working with our Goddard's Main Street organization on further enhancing our downtown. We feel that this works out really well because a lot of these key events do take place in or close to our downtown already. This person would report directly to me and it should be noted that we are looking at reconfiguring the front office. If you, if you are familiar with our front office, we currently have three people serving up there right now. We're looking at, we've been working with one of our furniture vendors on reconfiguring that space, moving a few things around and being able to add some additional desk and workspace so that we can accommodate this person in the front office as well as potentially two other positions as well. So again, we're looking at maximizing the space that we have here at city hall and being able to reconfigure the front office will allow for us to hire this person. It should be noted that we would do this reconfiguration prior to hiring this person, so everything's in place for them to start. Looking at the funding for this position and looking at the 2025 budget, we are, we would be allocating this to pay for the salary benefits as well as the events themselves. This is coming from the Tourism Promotion Fund, which is funded by the transient guest tax revenue. And again, there's no required action by the council tonight, but our goal would be that once we have the office reconfigured, hopefully, we can hire this position in the first quarter of 2025, get them on the ground running so that they can start working on the Main, the Main Street, the Main Street Market events. And there's a lot of effort that goes into making these annual events a success. So the sooner we can hire this person, the better, so they can start working with our community partners and vendors in making a successful 2025 season. More than happy to stand for any questions that council may have at this time.
I'll just make a brief comment. Craig and I have had a visit with the chamber director and the president and, you know, they, seeing this off to us is kind of a situation where they thought it's important, but they, they assured us that they weren't going to just run away and hide from us too. I just wanted to say that none of these events take place without broad community participation. And so the people that have been involved in these different activities and things, our hope is that they will continue to love their community and continue to volunteer their time and participate because it's that broad-based participation that makes these things successful and by no means can, can we take this on. It's really more of a oversight position and really not someone that's going to get a lot of things done because the chambers issues in terms of time and trying to fill two roles of being a chamber and trying to be an events group is kind of a burden on it. Chamber that's the size of a community between five and seem to be 10,000, if you say it that way. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment and anyone that's, that has participated and helped, we sure would like you to continue to participate and help, so.
Yes, definitely a collaborative effort. A lot of community partners involved. Thank you, mayor.
Anyone else? Chief's going to donate one of the jail cells for an office phase?
Sure.
I turn that space down, so.
No, it's the chin.
That's right, that's what it is. I'm still waiting for my light bulb in there, so.
There is a second floor to the community center, you know.
I've heard that, but I'm not going up there either. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Ryan, thank you and we'll move on to the next item you got here, so.
All right, very good. Okay, item number two this evening. So we are to the stage in tonight of adopting the Resolution of Intent for the Single Hauler Solid Waste and Recycling Services. As you recall, we have had the public hearing. That public hearing took place on October 7th and tonight, we have arrived at formally adopting the ROI. So again, the ROI has been drafted with assistance from our legal team to make sure that we are again following every state statute when it comes to this process of moving from an open market to a single dedicated, a dedicated, single hauler system. Again, if the ROI is adopted tonight, this does not lock the city into a single hauler system. What approving the Resolution of Intent or the ROI allows is for city staff to move on with the next steps as established by city statutes. What it allows us to do is pursue in drafting a solid waste recycling service plan. It allows us to draft and publish an RFP and then collect bids from active haulers, whether they're actively working in Goddard or not at this time, it doesn't matter, but allow them to submit bids and then we review those bids. Those will be done, as noted on here and in the staff report, during the May 19th, 2025 meeting. So again, approving the ROI tonight does not mean that we are moving in that direction. It just allows us to proceed with the next steps. As further analysis, again, city staff has been actively looking at this in terms of the benefits of moving into this type of system rather than an open market system. Very happy to share, we have some additional information. So many cities that have this service, the, with their single hauler, they get their trash and recycling services free of charge. This can include city hall, the Public Works Building, as well as large dumpsters for our community events and cleanup events that we have throughout the year. So thus far in 2024, the city's paid nearly $13,000 for these services. This would be definitely a cost savings mechanism by writing this into the contract that we would have with the selected single hauler. Secondly, for our more seasoned members of the community, for those that may need a little bit of extra service, some communities can write into the contract or have written into the contract that their trash service, they can put their bin right outside the garage or at the garage and the haulers will actually come up to the house, bring the bin down, dump it, and then return it. So again, that's a great benefit to, to our senior residents. And then lastly, I know a major concern that some members of council have is the additional staff time that would be required, potentially required with moving to a single hauler system in terms of billing, answering questions, setting up service, et cetera. Many communities or some communities write into the contract as well that the billing is maintained by that single hauler. So rather than that being put onto the city, staff have doing that, then it actually is still managed by the hauler itself. Now, of course, through the contract, we determine the prices and the price structure, so they can't just willingly say, oh, we're going to charge you that this amount this month or this quarter. They're still beholden to that contracted amount. It's just that they would handle the billing directly, which would certainly save some time for city staff. So I wanted to share that additional analysis with you this evening. Again, approving the ROI tonight does not mean that we are definitively going to a single hauler system. It just allows us to move forward with the next steps over the course of the next few months in, in going into May of 2025. This is again the timeline, so we are here on November 18th. So adopting the ROI will allow us to proceed with those steps that I have discussed. And again, we are asking, recommending making the motion to approve the ROI and allow us to continue to move forward with the next steps. Again, as part of drafting that plan, we are required to invite the existing haulers, so there are currently four active haulers working with the city. So we will reach out to them directly and get their input on the service plan. So there will be an opportunity for them to provide some feedback as well. But again, our recommendation this evening is to adopt the ROI and allow city staff to continue with the next steps with us visiting this again in March with the RFP and then reviewing those bids in, in May of 2025. Again, happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time.
Ryan, I'd add one thing, maybe two, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So we had a chance to go break bread with the nearby communities, kind of engage with them and ask them some questions about their experience with having a, a single hauler system and some of the, the new ideas that Ryan had brought up in his slide are things that we learned during this meeting. One of the other things that we.
You might be on the mic, so people are off here.
Just point, seriously, just point that one this way, it will help.
Yeah.
One of the other things that was shared with us is that in some of these contracts, they'll include what's called like a fuel adjustment charge. So if there's some kind of hyperinflation or something and the cost of fuel goes way up, they're actually able to build that in to the bill. So there could be a small amount of volatility due to that. Of course, it's possible we could write our contract to negate that, but I just felt like it was important to mention that. That way, you're getting all the important details as far as the pros and cons are concerned, so. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Auburn? Auburn, that'll do. Brad?
No.
Okay. Krista? Your job's not that sore.
I don't know. I, I still just feel like we're kicking a rock down the road, but I'll keep as far as we need to. Are we done picking up the beams as of right now, but that's fine.
Okay. I did go with Craig, the meeting upon the communities and my concern is the additional burden that this would put on our staff. If we have the company that's providing the service due to billing, we're completely out of it. And I guess at this point, I'm curious just to see, get to the bid process and see where we would end up. I mean, we're not committing ourselves to doing it. There's reasons, I mean, for our streets and everything else, but it might even mean a reduction even for people that have a contract. We won't know until we get to that point, so.
I guess my, my concern is at this point is how much time are you guys spending on this right now? Like if we are just kicking a rock down the road. Obviously, I'm willing to, to hear it out, but how much time a week are you spending on this right now for us to kick a rock?
So there, not a ton of time. Again, I would like to thank Morris Lane for putting the timeline together and helping us draft the ROI. Really, it's been some, obviously some research into the benefits of moving into the system, learning the pros and cons, reaching out to other communities as well. Again, this is a potential significant cost savings for the community. So we feel like this is definitely worth the investment of staff time to do this. Moving forward, again, if you do approve the ROI tonight, between now and March, we'll be drafting that, really the RFP by March, because that's, that's when that would be published. So my take would be that we look at other communities and see where we might be able to take their RFPs and do some duplicating of that, so we're not, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel. So, so minimal time in drafting the RFP as well as publishing it and then bringing in the haulers and, as well as soliciting further input from the public. I mean, there's, there's a little bit of a investment, but we feel it's definitely worth the time. It's not taking hours upon hours, though.
Okay.
But this, there are certain, it, once this is passed tonight, if it is passed tonight, those next steps, the RFP and the, and the service plan is, is what we'll be working on next.
And the community will have an opportunity to come out again?
Yes, so it won't be, it won't be a formal public hearing, but there will be an opportunity to provide further input into the drafting of the plan. And of course, we would let make, we would share that on social media and anyone in from the public could come to that meeting. It's not a form, it's not a formal public hearing. That's not required by state statute at this point, but we are required to solicit input at least from the existing haulers, but we include the public as well.
I think we read the first chapter of the book. Let's see how the rest of it pans out. I'm gonna make a motion to, to accept this RFP. I'm just making a motion.
Second.
ROI. We're gonna do that. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We're in seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three and two.
Thank you.
March on. Ball council. Next batter. Kevin, come on. Kevin, good to see you.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the next item on the agenda is in some ways straightforward and in some ways complicated. So you've seen a lot of petitions for improvements and resolutions for improvements that lead to special assessments. And this is related to that. And in the last few months, you've received, accepted and acted on a petition for Arbor Creek South sewer main improvements. And this item relates to that, but will add to it a benefit fee and it relates to what I've always heard referred to as the southeast corridor lift station. So that's an improvement that was made a number of years ago. It was authorized using the General Improvement and Assessment Law. Just last year, there was roughly $100,000 assessed to a subdivision in addition for the costs of that. But the balance of the costs of that have been paid by the city at large. So you have a lift station that's partially assessed, part funded the city at large. When that happens, there's an opportunity under the statutes to impose a benefit fee on future subdivisions that benefit and use that lift station. And if there's a city at large component, that benefit fee will go to reimburse. The city, city has the option of collecting that over time with assessments and that's what, what this is. You have Arbor Creek South with a sewer main improvement. That sewer mains can connect to the lift station, which again, has already been financed and we want to put in place a methodology to collect the benefit fee for the lift station in the same way that we're collecting assessments on the sewer main. So you have, as I mentioned earlier, received a petition and you adopted Resolution Number 24-48. It only references the sewer main. So the city asked the developer, property owner at Arbor Creek South to submit another petition that doesn't change anything as it relates to the sewer main, but acknowledge that they're going to be subject to. that they're going to be subject to a benefit fee for the benefits they're receiving from the lift station. So, I mean, the analysis, the petition is, the new petition, replacement petition is legally sufficient, it's in order, and you can see where I underlined there, it's assessments for improvement costs now and benefit fees, that's really what this does, gives you the ability to collect the benefit fee. So 100% to be assessed against 240 lots across all of Arbor Creek South addition. The estimated costs of the sewer main are unchanged, in fact, I think that's in the process of being bid probably. But the amount of the benefit fee, which was established using a per square foot calculation, I believe that's part of the city's policy now for these sewer lift stations, sewer improvements, calculates to $251,015.
Kevin, I'm gonna interject, it's not based on the square footage, it's based on our total cost that we incurred at the city as a percentage of that.
Okay.
Yes, just to be clear.
But this, again, the same concept, that's what the square footage is trying to get to. This one's, and that makes sense, you already have the improvement, you know what it costs, you know who's going to use it and benefit from it. So it's $251,000. So what it means is, in a few, if this is enacted, in a few years, the sewer main improvements will be complete, we'll have assessment proceedings, as you've seen, for the sewer main costs, but there will also now be the $251,000 benefit fee associated with the cost of the lift station that Arbor Creek South is benefiting from. That $251,000, as I referenced earlier, collected over time, will simply pay back the city for its city at large contribution. So this references all the statutory background for it. KSA 126A19 is the statute that specifically mentions the benefit fees that address this situation precisely, where something was built, city at large paid for it, there were some assessments, and now you have another subdivision that benefits from it, and it needs to pay its fair share. So I assisted in the drafting of the new petition and then directed the admitting resolution. Really, as I referenced earlier, nothing has changed from the original petition and resolution 2448, except we've added reference to a lift station and a benefit fee that these property owners and the developer property owner understands, this is just our $251,000 share for that lift station that we're using in the same way that a previous addition and probably future additions will benefit. So recommendation and action, it's like you've seen before, you have a petition, you would accept it, and then act on the authorizing resolution, which would impose the assessments of the benefit fee. So I know that's a lot, I'll stop there. Any questions?
So it's incremental payment over 20 years, it doesn't roll into the bond, we don't do it?
Yeah, it's interesting, we'll have to keep our eyes open. So in three years, whenever we're doing assessment proceedings on this, that $251,000 needs to be part, the benefit fee needs to be part of the assessment, which is right, the city won't borrow again, or that project's been financed. So we'll have to make a distinction at that time, that the sewer main assessments will be used for debt service on bonds to be issued, the benefit fee is not associated with any bond, it's just to repay the city for its cash expenditure.
Right. So these are two, no more than two?
Uh, I drafted this one. Not the consented agenda, but so motion to accept the petition and approve the new resolution.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the new petition and same carry two more improvements and approve the admitting resolution for such improvements and the petition of the benefit fee.
We're gonna make some motions. Keaton, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. I remember full word, community development director, Scotty, he can only use his...
I'm taking this one.
He's gonna give a break?
It's my doppelgänger.
No, 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 I can't blow this fast.
I was gonna say, I was gonna eliminate to the number of words that he used earlier, so he can sure.
So I'm judging with him.
Anyway, I for county road annexation. Second County reached out to the city last year to inform staff of the county's desire to have the city annex certain roads that everybody in the city's limits. Historically, when we annex, new property, we annex the roads up to the halfway point, and then we share the cost of maintenance with the county on that. County informed us that they would like city to annex certain roads in their entirety, instead of having chopped up roads, a little bit county, a little bit of city, to offset their maintenance costs and liability. County informed staff that prefer the city did this willingly to avoid unwanted litigation. If we say no to this, they will litigate it, and another community in the area has done that in the past, and it will for them, so there's case law out there that basically says they want us to, we kind of have to. Staff looked at the proposed statute, and the county sided, that the county sided for just fine forcing the city to annex roads. After discussing with city's attorneys, we agreed that it would be best to annex the roads as proposed. Now, the roads that they are wanting us to annex are roads that, as we said, we've got various sections of them that are annexed into the city, section that are in the county. This road here is Maple Street from 167th to 183rd, the blue areas are already annexed into the city and part of the city, the orange areas are county, and basically, we will be taking over maintenance of that road for that entire mile. This is further west on Maple, this is between 183rd and 199th, this is the Parkings Lane going into Tannanika, but then you see again, we have an annex all around, we have a small item there, but that's another, for another day. And then we have those small sections of county here that they're wanting us to take over. Again, we have another situation like this, this is 199th, south of Maple, we have one lot, though, that's still in the county, and so we have that tiny bit of road there that, and then the rest is already city. And then, of course, we've got 215th Street from US 54, Kellogg down to 23rd, this is Trails End and Dylan's. So we've got the majority of that, at least half of it annexed is 50/50, this way we can, we can control the road, we can, we can control maintenance on it as well. Many of these are, then we have 167th Street, this is south of, okay, I wanna make sure this is live. This is south of Kellogg down to 23rd, this is the, what is this property here that's gonna be built there?
167th Development.
The, what's the subdivision?
It's the 167th, west 167th Development. They call it Celtic or something.
Okay. And that's future developments there. And so we have 167th down there, south of Kellogg. And then, are we not gonna annex 167th north of Kellogg to Maple, or are we still discussing that?
That's separate.
Okay.
167th from Kellogg to Maple, we're working on as a separate issue from tonight with the neighboring jurisdictions.
Okay, and that's what I was wondering, so anyway, these roads, we are already planning these roads, we, right now, we're not planning this road, we're already planning those roads, we're already on those roads, we're already picking up trash in the ditches, we're already picking up anything else and taking care of them. This will require us to do maintenance on those roads, which obviously have to be planned and budgeted accordingly, but they're in our city, we're taking care of them, we know them and everything, so it's not that much of a change for us. Financial, there's a small publication cost for the ordinance, legal, decided upon our review of Robert Quigendall of Morris Lane, determined it was fair interpretation statute, all resolutions were to be approved as before. Any questions?
So when we take over Maple? We can do the...
The roundabout?
Yeah.
We can do whatever you want to finance and plan for improvement, so yes.
Oh, good idea.
Perfect.
There's a lot of roundabouts proposed to be introduced in our community through the traffic study. Honestly, Goddard is a little regressive when it comes to introducing roundabouts, for reasons I don't, I don't know, but if you look at kind of the ring around Wichita, as our mayor calls it, most of those communities already have them. I know our community development director here, Timmy, or assistant city administrator, came from Valley Center, where they've got several parks, they've got several, Andover Derby, they're all over, and they're safer. Folks get a little bit scared of change, which is understandable, but I think the introduction of roundabouts at the intersection, Councilman Trailer mentions, is probably a valuable one to look into, certainly.
And to add on what Craig just said, when we have a roundabout, we don't have a traffic sale, which is, which is less, less costly than making that sound the road. So anyway, if there are no additional questions, recommendations, or want to wait the reading of the ordinance?
Make a motion to wait the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Keaton's motion, if we're in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you all good?
I think so. The train has left the building.
I think so. I'm making a motion to approve the adoption of the ordinance, annexing certain grounds into the corporate city limits.
He's made a motion, I'll second that motion, bro.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
The ordinance 984.
984, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Bruce. See you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council, and I got a brief update on the city operations, projects, future islands of business, and a couple upcoming council meetings to add to your schedule. First project for discussion here, the Goddard water master plan, it's also been referred to as a pressure study. We received the first draft of that from professional engineering consultants and met with them last week to discuss the results. They're working on some revisions for our request, and we anticipate a final draft in the coming days. We'll present that to the ad hoc water committee as well as city council, probably somewhere around first quarter of next year. Engineering plan interview and field services with Garber, the city staff are contemplating this MSA with Garber for plan interview and inspection services. The legal teams amongst the city and Garber's representatives are working through the MSA. I've seen a couple red line versions of that, so we're trying to get that to a point where we both agree that it's good to go, and then we'll bring that to council. Little government relations, LGR, so at the last council meeting, I spoke a bit to some legislative changes occurring. I told you that it'd be possible that we'd be bringing this proposal to council for approval after consulting with our CFO. Looking at the purchasing policy, this is something we're able to approve administratively. I'm already seeing some positive returns from the new relationship with LGR, there's already some meetings that have occurred with some of our state administrative agencies, as well as some of our state legislatures and other lobbyists representing communities that have a passion for this issue. I think this team approach should bear fruit, so we will keep you updated as things advance there. Streetscape planning services, kind of the same situation, when we got our three proposals back, the low cost and highest qualified firm, the cost was within the expenditure authority, so we got them, kickstarted that process, they're beginning to put together the high level concepts and the estimating. This is one section of our 10-year CIP, so we're kind of getting to the point where estimates and project concepts are rolling in, so we can start enveloping those into the 10-year CIP. Hope to be presenting that to you at the first of next year, it's kind of the roadmap in the future. We're excited to bring that to council, so you can see the plans that we have in place to work on our infrastructure in a proactive way. Linear park playground addition, public works department's received half of the equipment, it's been delivered. We've got a lot of rainfall lately, not sure if you noticed, but that has delayed the relocation of the irrigation and trees. Can't really get out there when it's muddy, we don't want to tear up the lawn too much, we'll wait for it to dry out a bit, and then we'll get that going. 183rd turn lanes, there will be a gathering of the minds here in the city council room tomorrow, November 19th at 2:00 PM, to open the bids for the 183rd turn lanes project. I think we have six or seven prime bidders for that project, so if we get three or four bids, we'll be delighted with that. Construction, hopefully to begin quarter one of 2025. If you remember, we had inquired with council as to whether they would prefer a 60 or 90 days working window. If it were to be 60 days, it would require a full closure of the north side of 183rd at US 54, so we will continue to make sure we are communicating with the public, the school district, and other stakeholders, so they can prepare to anticipate that traffic closure. It'll be a bit of a Band-Aid approach, but hopefully, we'll have a dry construction season, and we can get in and out of there in 60 days. I know everyone will be very pleased when we have those additional turn lanes, so we can keep the flow of traffic moving. On that note, I want you guys to know that Trant Systems, the traffic engineering firm that's been doing quite a bit of work on US 54 in partnership with KDOT in the city, has been collaborating with our public works department, as well as our chief of police and the signaling at both the arc light lights, as well as at 183rd and 199th, all along US 54. I've seen lots of emails going back and forth about tinkering that's being done, it always kind of feels like we get to where we like it, and then, you know, then it's like, well, this isn't quite right. I thought we were at a point where it was probably pretty good, and then I noticed the last day or two that the signaling for the north to southbound traffic on 199th, that light's only green for about four and a half seconds, so we probably are gonna have to do a little more tinkering on that. This morning, we actually had flashy reds do a maintenance issue, our crews responded to that, got it fixed, but I just want the public and the council to know that I don't feel like we're in a final spot with how that traffic control system is going to be calibrated, we're still kind of working towards getting to that sweet spot, and we appreciate the patience of everyone as we work in that direction. The ad hoc water committee, I did this last time, is the 25th, not the 26th, so hopefully, I'm not one digit off when I come and give you the recap at the next council meeting. So November 25th, 7:00 PM, location City Hall, we do have the appropriate date published on the city website, and that will be sent out to the agenda distribution list of this public meeting. SCADA system to the city council, so we got our bids back, city staff are undergoing a due diligence process, they're gonna go visit a couple of facilities that have the bidders' devices in utilization, so we can get some firsthand referrals as to how these systems are working. It's extremely important that we do a little additional due diligence, because this is a significant capital investment, and it's very important this stuff is, you know, protecting our vital infrastructure, there's a health and welfare component to it that requires some additional due diligence. So I'm hopeful that we will have a recommendation to city council at some point near the turn of the year, but hang tight. Goddard North Park, the November 26th, that's a Tuesday, at noon, the city council will gather for a public meeting to review the final draft of the North Park master plan and phase one schematic design, that'll be a workshop time. If you're interested in where we're at, visit the North Park story map, or come to the meeting, of course. Kind of the next steps, after this current contract with the engineering firm that's doing this work on behalf of the city, the next steps would be requesting qualifications and costs for a design-build process. So what we've done thus far is master plan the whole park site in just schematics for phase one. Getting in design-build, we're requesting a firm or a team of firms that would actually take phase one schematic design and put it into fully engineered documents, constructible documents that you could hand to a GC and say, give us a bid to go build this, that's kind of the next step after we finalize the master plan and phase one schematic design with the city council on the 26th. October, community development update, 19 total building permits, that includes not only new residential, but some commercial projects, maybe someone put a pergola or, you know, something like that in addition to their house, but from a new residential, you know, ground up, project eight of those for two family and then two single family, all the permits issued in October equals a total of 18 new places for families to live, $3.7 million in new valuation, and almost $100,000 in permit fee revenue. This next item, the city has received inquiries about the jurisdictional relationship between the police departments operating in our community and the broader school district. The Goddard Public Schools USD 265 Police Department exists as its own independent police department, handling their own investigations and patrols on school property and related functions. The City of Goddard Police Department can assist, the Goddard Public Schools Police Department will call upon, they can assist us as well when we call upon them, and it's most commonly occurring during... when we call upon them, and it's most commonly occurring during traffic accidents near school property. If you've ever seen one of the USD's vehicles out there maybe working in an accident with our officers near an entrance to a school. School facilities at the Eisenhower Campus on the east side of 167th Street are outside of the Goddard city limits and have jurisdiction amongst the USD 265 Police Department as well as WPD. City of Goddard PD can assist at the Eisenhower Campus as well if called upon. The agencies work really well together in that way. So upcoming agenda items, I mentioned the SCADA, I mentioned the turn lanes. We'll have a bid award proceeding with the city council. Brooke is nearly finished with putting together the salt storage request for proposal. We'll need your authorization to advertise that for bid. The water utility master plan presentation. There was a discussion about the need for some front office reconfiguration, we'll need purchase approval there. We're looking at taking the code compliance, code enforcement operation, operation private. North Park Master Plan Presentation. Ryan, our assistant city administrator, is working on creating a land bank. I'll tell you about the citing opportunities that come with that in future meetings. We have some planning commissioner appointments or reappointments coming up, and then some code changes for water services, and subsequently, the master fee schedule. Lastly, did not make it on here, but I wanna make sure that the community and the city council knows that on December 2nd, at the 7:00 PM city council meeting, we will have a new business item to discuss the health and sanitation operation, more notably, the mosquito fogging process and what that could look like in the spring. So that'll be on for December 2nd. Those who came and spoke publicly at the last council meeting, you know, we've done some reaching out to them to make sure that they're aware that that conversation will be occurring, and we look forward to having that dialogue amongst the council. So at this point, that's all I have. I'd be glad to answer any questions from the dais.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Okay. Do you have any comments? I'm ready to start. Good job, as always. The suit is fire, both.
Thank you.
My congratulations. Thank you. And thank you for your testimony tonight. Really appreciate the job with your family. All right. Where's it gonna call it? Krista.
Congratulations, Micah.
Thank you.
Devin and Kayla, thank you for coming and representing this evening, stating your case. I'm sure that we will do all that we can to look into it, and we'll be praying for your family.
Keaton?
Micah, congrats to you. That's awesome. Everybody on city staff, you guys are incredible, and it is truly a blessing to get to be a part of this team. Thank it to work with people who are so easy to work with, so thank you for that. Thank you, guys, for being here. It takes a lot of courage to stand in that mic. I think it takes a lot more courage to stand there than it does to sit here. And I am looking forward to that conversation, and would love to see you guys back in this room in a few weeks. Yeah, I'll leave it at that for now.
I have other comments as well, and we'll probably pray for your family. I want to thank the staff. Micah, congratulations again. When you look at Craig's report, the city's on the move. There's a lot going on. Appreciate everyone's effort to keep things going. So remember that we wanna do the right things and do them the right way. That's easily said, but sometimes hard to deliver, but I hope we just keep that in mind as we go forward. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Keaton makes a motion.
Second.
I'm in second. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here it is. Do you want to say it?